Okay, at seven o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Darcy, we call the roll, please.
Morse?
Here.
Mar? Moody?
Here.
Instrom?
Here.
Engelhardt?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the pledge. Everybody please stand and say pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Good to see you. All right, we go to item four then, perfection and approval of the agenda. There are motion for that, please.
Don't move.
One or two?
Don't move.
All right.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying no? There you go. Thank you. Okay, item five is a public comment. Say your name too, Bob.
Bob Schrader.
All right, thank you.
Uh, this morning, I called down to EPD. I am involved with another issue down there as well, but they reiterate up the $250,000, $200,000 bill that occurred up at Agri. None of you have, the city hasn't made a public comment about that yet, and I think so, let's get with it.
Yep.
Also, gallon spill, in my opinion, contract several times that you have with involving this money that we pay them every month from the citizens of Pulsville. This has voided that contract. They're in a perfect position to do away with this right now, and I would say you get out of this agreement while you still can before somebody sues the city, and that will happen. So, that's all I have to say. Are you all aware of that $250,000 spill?
I didn't hear what you said.
Are you aware of the $250,000 gallon spill? Okay, it's right there.
Yeah.
Very well. You need to make a press announcement about that. $250,000 is a significant amount. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Yeah.
Anybody?
I'll be really quick. I know. I was like, ah, I don't think I talked last time. Um, I just wanted to keep you guys updated on where we are in heart and soul, and I always check in so you know things are happening. Right now, we're working on our action plan, and this will be a publicly shared document where we share what the community said, what we're going to try and work on, um, and it will be colorful and easy to read and hopefully easy to understand. And, um, my goal is to have it done by March and hopefully share it out within April or May publicly. So, I just wanted to let you know things are happening, but things are not sort of public facing anymore where we're not having events and we're not asking people for things. We've done all those things, and we are working behind computers and making things, so that is all.
Thank you. Crystal, just for the benefit of the folks on here, would you tell us your name, please?
Crystal Duffy. I'm the Postal Public Library Director and the Project Coordinator for our postal community, heart and soul.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll go on to item six then, uh, I guess if we're public, I believe. Okay, item six, Terry, come on up.
I just thought I'd give you an update on what's going on with your ICAP renewal. I have talked to Darcy and Dennis about this already, but, um, ICAP this year said to budget for about a 30% increase, mostly on the property side of things again. And then this year, they are putting on a couple of endorsements on policies. And these are actually common with our commercial companies that we have. The one of them is a cosmetic exclusion. So, if you have metal roofs or siding on any of your buildings that have hail damage, they're, if it doesn't change the function of the roof for the siding, they're not going to pay the claim on it. Um, except it's kind of getting to be a common endorsement on commercial properties. The biggest change that they are putting out there is driven by reinsurance, and it's a catastrophic windstorm and hail deductible. And I made a copy for everybody.
You just have one here. Yeah, yeah, I'll get those guys. That's fine. Yeah.
Sorry.
I thought it'd be all right. I think we have it, so.
Here we go. Terry, would you mind stating your name, please?
Tara Willbert from Community Insurance of Iowa in Hoshin. So, to explain this windstorm and hail deductible, this will, um, this is only in the case of a catastrophic loss. So, a catastrophic loss would have to be deemed by the insurance offices, ISO. And that, what that means is if the damages for any one event, for instance, a deracial goes through the state of Iowa or through goes through the state of Iowa, goes through El Maki County, goes through the city of Pulsville. If those damages exceed 25 to 28 million, then it's going to be considered catastrophic. Catastrophic, so. And if that happens, uh, you would be subject to a minimum windstorm and hail deductible depending on the amount of damages. So, the, remember I highlighted that 25,000 deductible? Because your total insured value, um, is between the 25 million and 50 million amounts. You're actually at, your total insured value is under, right under, uh, you've got 29 million, almost 30 million in buildings, 2.3 million in personal property. And miscellaneous scheduled property, which would be, you have tractors, uh, ATVs, um, items that are more than 10,000 in value. Miscellaneous unscheduled property is miscellaneous tools, anything under 10,000 that would go from location to location. That limit is 313,000, and then your auto physical damage, you're right under 590,000. So, because the total insured value that you have is between 25 and 50 million, your minimum deductible would be 25,000. So, worst case scenario, it's going to be the greater of a percentage deductible or the minimum. 20 will go through the city of Pulsville. You guys are flattened. Everything, you lose everything. You're going to be subject to that 2% deductible, so that maximum deductible would be 2% of your total insured value. So, that would be right around 670,000.
So. I don't speak Greek.
Yeah. So, because you said your total insured value, they take, that would be 2% of that amount. Okay, and so 2% of your total insured value with everything, buildings, personal property, miscellaneous scheduled property, autos, everything, 2% of that value would be 671,000. That's worst case scenario. That's if you are flattened.
And that's our minimum?
Yes. It'd be the greater of
671.
671, but right around 671,000.
But this is only if there's a deracial versus
A catastrophic. So, windstorm, hail, um,
Totally.
So, if the, if it was a 25 to 28 million dollar damage, it would be catastrophic?
Yes, and that would be like the one event, they said, the deracial that went through central Iowa. And that's that one event for all of those cities and counties. The biggest, I would say you probably have to worry mostly about a tornado. Your, your buildings and such are pretty concentrated through the city. If a tornado came through, like an EFIC tornado, that's where you'd be totally in trouble. And I, I don't want to say it's never going to happen.
No.
You know, because it can, it can happen. Um, this is, like I said, this is reinsurance driven. This is not ICAP's decision to make. They have, they had, they really struggled with it. And they are having a Zoom webinar to explain this, and I sent the link to Darcy. They're inviting any council members, um, any, you know, employees of cities, uh, counties, anybody that can, they can zoom in and listen, you know, it. It's on March 20th. Um, and I sent it to Darcy. If anybody wants me to forward it to them too, I can. So, but they'll, they'll kind of explain it in a little more detail.
Would there be some comment on that too, or you just listen?
I mean, if you have questions, they're going to open it up. If you have questions or comments, yeah. It's, since they really struggled with it. I, I've had a lot of conversations with the marketing person from there. She's she doesn't like it.
What time of day is that, Zoomers?
I think it's at nine o'clock. Or, like, I just did, for instance, your waterworks building is insured for 1.6 million. So, if that gets flattened, that's the total loss, windstorm or hail. Your deductible for that would be 32,151,000. So, that's that 2% deductible, because it's the greater of the 2% or the 25,000.
Kind of a structure by structure or by any, you know.
Yeah.
But that's just the face. That's
Any other occurrence, fire, you're going to have your regular policy deductible.
Okay.
Yeah, you got a thousand dollar deductible for that. I did request votes for higher deductibles just to see if that would save anything in premium. See 25,000 dollars deductible. But
And those are 100% replacement value then?
For most of your item, for your buildings and contents on the plans for your, because your buildings and contents are on a blanket basis. So, all of your buildings are replacement cost. I need to have some items for the miscellaneous property that are replacement cost. You've got a 2020 loader, that's on a replacement cost basis. You've got a Bobcat, that's replacement cost. But other, your, your other equipment, that's ACV. And I won't have numbers probably until May. Oh, pretty much all of their municipalities and counties renew at the same time. So, they, they try to get numbers out maybe June somewhere near May, so I could come back for the main.
So, this is just information for us?
This is information I can have.
James said, but when was the last time there was a tornado in Pulsville?
Never.
Never? I, I, yeah, I wouldn't.
Like I said, it's
There you go.
The chances are pretty minimal, but it can happen.
Yeah, I know.
And it seems like these things occur more and more often, so I hate saying, oh, it's never going to happen. You don't ever have to worry about this.
And that, you don't need it until you need it.
Right.
Well, I think insurance in general is giving you an indication of how this happens a lot.
Yeah, I'm
You know, so.
My hair is going more and more gray.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just
Yeah, it's, it's been a mess.
I think it's been insured churches are doing the same thing.
They're doing everywhere. Arms, houses, everything. Yeah, you're getting less coverage and it's costing more premium. It's just across the board.
So, what it has done, and I, our department heads have taken, uh, inventories and things like that. And when it gets to the case where it's just not worth insuring anymore, you just won't insure it anymore, so. And I, I suppose that's a good thing to go take inventory once in a while, too. So, yeah.
Yeah, and it's funny you say that because I'm a lot of the other entities that I work with, they've been going through things. Okay, what do, what do we need this building for? What do we need this? I have to make sure this piece looks like it's been altered. Just getting moving. Unfortunately, that's just what it's come down to. Any more questions at all? I can plan on coming back in May when I get numbers to deliver more bad news.
We need to get the numbers.
Yeah, I'll come in all black.
Put gray hair.
Put more gray hair.
Bob, you got a question?
Yeah. I've always wondered so here, when we were sued years ago. See, it's been way over a million dollars. See, you have all these people hope to be in the if they were to.
Yeah, so you have your public officials liability on this policy.
Errors and omissions.
Yeah. Yep, they do something wrong, they have that, that liability.
Or accuse them.
Right, yep, and so they, they have, ICAP has to do me.
Got good news?
Oh. Yep, so, I would say in the state of Iowa, ICAP and EMC is the only player that owns these properties. And counties, public entities are very good companies. They have their differences in coverages and such, but they're both very good companies. EMC is facing the same things that everybody else. It's increases higher deductibles.
I go up.
We've seen in our, with our companies, we've seen anywhere from eight to 40% losses and all that.
All right, thanks, Tara.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven then is, uh, uh, resolution number 1420-24, a resolution approving the subdivision plat to El Maki County, Iowa, and this is Ziegler with Ziegler and Pulsville.
Taking that out of the city and giving it to the county?
No.
I don't understand this.
Well, how about, I bet you can. Can you explain that? The plat, what's what it is?
Well, it's a plat of surveys that Ziegler purchased from Gunderson, correct? Um, it has to go through what we call a plat review of county. Initially, the plats all come to like the auditor, recorder, treasurer, zoning, my office as far as environmental health, and 911, and the engineer. So, we just make sure that all the paper trail that we need for each of our offices has been included on the proposed plat. Thursday, I believe Terry said it's going to plat review, then that plat, once everything is, is good to go, then they forward that on to the zoning commission. The zoning commission makes a referral to the board supervisors.
Okay.
And they'll
Makes total sense. Thank you.
Numbers, um, it says 631 feet by 618 feet. Is that the lot or the building? The lot, the lot, okay.
Come on up, Terry.
Terry Draper, uh, Ziegler Caterpillar. Um, this is, this is not the land that you, that we annexed into the city. This is, we bought the entire Gunderson Farmstead, that big chunk of dirt. And then we, we broke off 44 acres and some odd, something to get annexed in here a year ago when I was here for that. And now we're selling the eight acre homestead where the dry inside is and the house and the buildings. And because we're splitting this farm up again, we, we already split it once to get it annexed into the city. Now, the county's requiring us to do this sub subdivision thing, because we're going to sell the, we don't want to be landlords, right? So, we're keeping the dirt, but we're selling the homestead to the, to the folks that rent it. And in order to do that, I have to have So, yeah, it does not affect the land that was annexed into the city. It's a different part of the farm. But because I'm within two miles of city limits, I have to, I have to go through this extra.
Go through this.
Exactly. Yep. All right, thank you.
All right, so since that's been explained so well, I guess we need a, a motion?
We're stepping on each other.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to read, adopt resolution number 1420-24.
Becca?
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Morse?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That passes. Full silence. All right, so we're done with that. That's what I made, and that's parade permit, uh, parade permit application by Gideon.
Gideon, who we called last minute, he asked me
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Well, you want to, Terry?
So, so it's a community thing, so it's basically a whole ball. My name is Aaron Schimmel, uh, director of that, northeast Iowa, the Jewish Welcome Center. And, uh, part of the community of leaders for that. Um, first of all, thank you for, for having me, and thank you for everything you do. Uh, you know, dedicating your time and energy for the, for the well-being of the community. And, uh, last time I was here, it was a long time ago. And, uh, I come today, it took me many hours to prepare, so I'm sure you do it every week, every month. So, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you for that. Um, basically, talking about the, the parade, uh, it's called the New Torah, New Torah Scroll dedication parade. Let me give you, you know, prepared some, uh, you know, some information about it.
Thank you.
Don't worry, it's not the whole Torah scroll here. Only one portion maybe. So, basically, briefly, the Torah, um, that's the, the most sacred object there is in the, in the Jewish tradition. It's, uh, it's very holy. It's kept very holy. You know, in the synagogue, you have a special, uh, special ark for that. And, uh, it's not taking out, only special pines, and if it's taken out, it's, everybody rises. It varies, a holy object is basically the, the five books of Moses. Uh, but it's, it's handwritten on, on parchment, parchment paper. In this flyer you see on the, on the website, it's like a flyer we made a few years ago, but it has many, most of the information about what the Torah scroll is all about. So, basically, it's a, uh, we have 3,000 years, um, the same way it's written 3,000 years ago on parchment paper and with quill and ink, and every word has to be specially written and by special scribe who learns the laws, how to write it many years. And, um, it takes, in order to write it, to complete the, the whole Torah scroll, which is made up about 80, says it, the longest 80, uh, sections of parchment and 300,000 letters. And so, and every letter had to be handwritten, it cannot be, uh, like by printing or something. It takes about a year, a year and a half to write the whole thing. So, usually when, when it's finished, in the way, you know, the one that dedicates it to the synagogue, uh, um, make a whole parade from his house to the synagogue and everybody, you know, you take the New Torah scroll and everybody escort it music and singing, and then that whole meal, it's a whole celebration. It's a, and, um, especially here, it's a very big excitement, because it's the first time you do such a thing. You know, until now, we had basically old Torah scrolls that we purchased from other, from other, from other people. But this one is a real new one, written, handwritten, especially for our community. And so, it's a real historic, uh, historic event, and many guests are coming, and you have also the media. So, basically, Pulsville will be on the, on the map all over, um, about this special event. So, um, so we, we submitted the, the permit, we have the last page here, on the right side, the permit to the city. And I understand that, um, Gideon was in touch with, with, uh, Darcy, with, uh, Deborah, um, about the details. And, and you have here the, the map. The map on where they'll go. So, basically, it begins at, at, at Gideon's house, which is on the highway on the 18. Far from the motel. And the parade will walk through the, the highway and go until Dollar General and making a left over there until the synagogue. Will start on, 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 and, and Sunday, March 17, 3:30 PM, until about 4:15, the whole parade. Um, now, now, the, the, the main, the main concern is that on the highway, which, uh, you know, it takes about four minutes walk from, from the house, Gideon's house, to the corner, to the Dollar General, about four minutes walk. But when you have a whole community, 150 people walking, you're talking about 20 minutes about. And, uh, we're concerned about, you know, the safety, you know, if, you know, you can walk on the side, which is, you know, everybody can walk there. But, uh, you know, so many people walking and you have the 45 speed limit, you know, it could, it could get a little bit dangerous. So, uh, we contacted, I know the, you know, we spoke with, uh, Gideon spoke with Darcy and, and Deborah, and also we contacted the DOT, Department of, of, um, the and and then essentially they, they were very, uh, you know, they agreed verbally. And even, you see here on page number four, usually they have like a 45, 45 days notice for, for the event. And here, they agreed to disregard this 45 days, so they took off the 45 days requirement. Um, so, so basically, they, they, they agreed, but, but they, they asked, um, they, if they send a, 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 you know, font you have there, the file here, and, and the, you have the form, Iowa DOT. It's be filled out and send them. And, and they sent back saying that, you know, hopefully this, if the city will agree. Well, basically, we're looking at, you know, if it could be some kind of, uh, you know, the police escort, um, that few, you know, that, that part. Basically, added the whole thing, but you know, that on the highway, and if something can be done, you know, maybe the Balsam Lane or whatever. You know, just, you know, for, you know, for safety reasons. But that, so we're talking basically on 20 minutes, beginning 3:30, but on that part, you know, on the highway part, it'll take about 15, 20 minutes, not longer. So, if, you know, something can be done to accommodate, uh, this, you know, the safety requirement and, uh, how, uh, it should go smoothly.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How many people do you expect in this parade?
So, expect about 100, 200, 250 people.
Do you think that many people can go that time in that time? Do you think that many people can go that time, in that time?
Um, well, okay, well, we can make a special effort to rush everybody and tell them that we have to go fast on that part.
I was, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
That's a lot of people to be moving. Anyway, go on.
No, it's a good question, and we'll try to make it, you know, as fast as possible, on that, you know, that, that's the highway part.
Is this looking to close the highway, or was to escort?
So, whatever, whatever you feel, you know, with the police, whatever they feel is, uh, could be for safety, if it's, if it would escort, that's also good, you know, have a police car in the back and in the front, and escort the people. Or, I don't know, you know, maybe just one lane to have close, and have like, you know, like when you have the construction, you have two people waiting, you know, on both sides, and, you know, that, uh, be a big help, because it's a very historical event.
Basically, you can't really afford it, but space is big.
Close the flares, so they're looking rather than.
They wanna flag her one way.
Yeah, they send that from the DOT, showing it, but on the road, the road here, on this email we do, the highlighted, so you write, "City estate vehicles with amber, when amber light, stop slow, traffic for twenty minutes, for a few places then." You need, and you don't need those signs, if it's only like a twenty minute, you have the police cars with the lights, I'm sure they know.
I just wonder, you're rushing people, would take away from the... Yeah, the solemnity of the event, I mean, this is something that's wonderful to your community. And rushing them doesn't seem like a very...
Well, they can take their time, once they turn on hard and drive, because that's...
Okay, so the rush to get to them anyway, then you've got the synagogue from there.
Okay.
That makes sense.
The grass portion, walk on the grass, but you have, uh, they do, they have a few ones, uh, so you got those guys too. So you have to try and get permission for that, if you wanted to do that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's an idea.
If you're in the grass on the side, when you're facing, when you're walking, you should be facing the traffic, you would be going by, um, where the, the track, where does that place, it's by Dollar General.
The old, the old implement shop.
Yeah, the implement shop, and who else's property would you have to be on?
Vegas, I'm not for sure. Next to that. But you stay on the right, stay right.
Right away.
Right away, you'll still be in the grass, but you'll still be a part of on the state right away. You still walk the grass. From the shoulder over on the state right away.
Right.
So be on the grass. And that could probably be doable, but, like JT's saying right now, my staffing is, it'll be...
Very light.
Yeah. Question, if everybody else's law enforcement is gonna be at Walk On, because it's St. Patty's Day, and they gotta parade, it's a big parade, and they get everybody in it for law enforcement.
Question, if we bring in more, like, state police or whatever, if you could approve, gather with the state police, you'll tell us how much, how much you cost me.
Yeah, normally, on a normal permit, which, you guys saw the permit, but normal, on a normal permit, on the backside, in order for a parade, detours, and everything on the highway, a highway ISP officer needs to sign off on it. Now, with being St. Patty's Day, ISP may be busy up north, and maybe busy other places, or be in the area. I don't know, I can't answer that question for you, if you can get ISP here.
I ask you, the Iowa State Patrol.
Oh, okay.
Iowa Patrol, Iowa State Patrol, yeah.
That might be your best bet, because if we're gonna do...
And they're required to sign off on this application, actually.
Right, if you look on the backside of the application, they're required that, I have to, I have to have a ISP officer sign off on it, that they're in agreement with this application, and this route, on any normal application, then I'd have to turn into DOT. So, for this, this to get signed off, it still needs to get signed off by ISP.
Okay.
Lock up the street.
Can you hire officers from like Manona or McGregor Marquette?
You can, if we can find them, if they're gonna do it.
Right, when is the date of this?
Next.
This comes Sunday. You're ahead of the game, huh?
Yeah.
That's probably why they weren't for forty-five days in advance.
Supplying, um, as of right now, for just postal PD, it'll be just three officers. I haven't talked to the fourth one yet, like, part timers are out, are out, they can't, won't be around. The fourth officer, it's her, it's her weekend off, I don't know if they'll bring her in or not, but that's over OT for two of the officers at least, well, not me, but...
Yeah.
How much you need to try to get more from the ISP?
Two ISP for sure, to work the full ends of a eighteen, then we'd have to everybody else, add the other two on hundred, and then have the, the third running calls if there is a call, at that timeframe.
So, what the two you said, or three?
Two.
Two.
Minimum.
Okay, so, so if we bring in another two, we have, uh, we, uh, push that ahead?
You let me make the phone calls to ISP.
Okay.
Okay? Because I'm afraid if you call, they're gonna be like, wait, what are you talking about? Because in order to get this permit signed, I still gotta call ISP, and I gotta explain to them what's going on. And so I know the local sergeant, Decora. He's the one, my go-to guy, okay? So I'm gonna have to make some phone calls, and go from there, if I can't get ISP, yeah, next step will be fire truck, possibly, if they're, if they're willing to do it.
Okay.
To...
Why don't you go to the county, the city, Sheriff of the Cities, McGregor Marquette?
I can check with Clayton County, Clayton County Sheriff's Office, yep, I can check with them.
Because that part of...
I was gonna say, that is Clayton.
That is Clayton, yeah, because it, Elm key, I'm assuming they're gonna all be...
They're gonna be busy.
They're gonna be busy with Walk On, with, um, all the festivities going on there.
But like I said, that's...
Might be something like, oh, yeah, wants to make some overtime.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And how long did you think it would take, though, to do the walk?
We'll have to, I don't know if your folks wanna...
Just minutes, that portion.
Either approve this, if you continue on, what we can put together.
Let me, you guys discuss the overtime pay, with him, what it's gonna cost him.
You can make a connection now?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Is overtime timer a half, or is it double time, or what is it, something like the weekend?
Well, I guess what we need to do is decide if, because we don't know the figure.
Right.
So...
It might take double times. It might take double time to get them to work.
Whatever takes.
We will, but you might wanna wait for his response back, because if they say no, then they won't sign up for it, when they say no, and they have to sign off.
They'd have to sign it before we can do anything.
So we'll, yeah, he'll, we'll make, he'll make that connection, and then we can kinda put this together, then.
Is that date significant to this whole thing, or is it just...
To what he said, and he has people flying in, and, you know, the whole ceremony, so...
But the day itself is, has significance?
No, to what he said, you know, maybe quit up.
Yeah, come, please come up to... Please, please talk into the mic, please. Okay.
Actually, that date is very significant, because it's, um, the birthday and day that the passing of Moses.
After the Torah.
And the, the book, like, you know, the Torah is called the Book of Moses, it's, it's, it's his birthday, and they're asking, so it is a very significant date.
Thank you.
Just move on and come back to it.
Why, why would it have to start at Gracianni's house? And the parade starts some different place, just to avoid this major highway.
He's the one sponsoring it, or whatever, so...
So, this is how, the customary, this is how it goes, the one that sponsored it from his house, and take it to the synagogue.
Okay.
It's a very big thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To have the ending of the, of the, of the writing, kind of, you are happy.
Are they gonna be floats, or it's just people and music?
I think so, maybe he has some floats and...
Is he having, uh, the car?
He has some kind of, yeah.
It's a hundred-ish of them, not just people.
It's not, it's not a lot of them, it's probably just the car, the crown part.
The what?
The car with that crown that going around. It's the crown part. It's a big, big red, red crown on top of it.
That needs to parade?
On the road.
Yep. Well, I think, because we really can't discuss money, because we don't know what that is, and how about if we just, let's go to the next item on the agenda, just sit still, and we'll, we'll find out what's going on, okay? Okay, let's go to item nine, which is the handicap parking request. Rabbi, were you gonna discuss that too, or? Yeah?
Who's on doing, anybody?
Part of the new pizza place, pizza manufacturing place.
Yes, yes.
Makes more sense to have it by the pharmacy, and then the city park now. And this way, the person who needs it is already up on the cycle, they've driven up the other side. Like it's from the city.
I would've thought in the parking lot too, like that end one.
Yeah, the first one.
The first, near the pharmacy, yeah.
This is the end one of, of courses to the, good pizza manufacturing.
Yeah, well, you need to remember, we've got state coming through here in a month, and they're gonna be carrying higher downtown, so, you know, painting right now is not an option with the weather, and so I would say
Table this and so...
I wouldn't do anything with handicap parking until you're done with this project.
There's only two in front of the pharmacy that we can take.
Or, if you put handicap in that first angle closest to the pharmacy, that would make the most sense.
Yeah.
And it's not that busy highway.
Yeah, and it's already on the, on the elevation.
So I, I think that's a good idea, I think we probably need a motion to table this thing until we see how...
DOT.
Yeah.
I know that we tabled, um, this, uh, handicap parking request, until we get finished with the DOT project.
Project.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Not all of them favorite, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, say no? Alright, we will table that one then. Okay, item ten then, uh, resolution number fourteen twenty-two dash twenty-four, a resolution setting a date for a public hearing for sale of property by bid process, and this is on Corey Hill. That's the property that the city owns out there. Any questions?
How many acres is it, yes?
Five?
It's just under five.
Five?
Five acres. And it is, uh...
Eggland?
Eggland, it's right by the rock quarry.
Yes.
So, what we're bidding, what we're going to be moving on to invite a bid.
Right, so you're setting the public hearing for your next meeting in April, and you set a minimum bid amount of fifty thousand dollars, that's in the bidding instructions. So, basically, so this is your, um, motion, this resolution is directing me to give notice, basically, that you're going to be selling property by bid process.
If you don't get it, you just, uh, try it again.
Yeah.
Looks at your minimum, all right.
It's like...
Yeah.
So, uh, we'll, we moved ahead a little bit, and we'll, we'll get this item done, and then we'll come back to you, okay? So, uh, is there a motion then to, uh, for the resolution? Rerate, Darcy.
Mar?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Now we'll go back then to, uh, the parade, uh, permit, Matt, what did you find out?
So, the sergeant I talked to, he's actually off this week, but he said, he does know that ISP is not involved in the Walk On parades, so, but he gave me another number, the night officer, that's the commander, and he should be on tonight, call him up, message, so he should get back to me tonight, if not, I'll get ahold of him tomorrow, and we'll discuss it, and tell him what's going on. I don't think it'll be a problem, but I can't speak for ISP. If they cannot, won't be able to provide two, then our next step is go check with, well, talk with JT, with Clayton County. I know, you spoke with an officer from Clayton County? Dylan in Woody State, that it would be... So it would be, they would have to hire up some of their reserves to cover, to, and to help, and if that's not available, our next step would be, I'm gonna sue Manona PDs, if they're available, let's have to put it on the list. And, if nothing else, we're gonna have to talk to the fire department, the chief, and buy a truck. But we'll figure something out for you. But we'll figure something out for it.
Each, each group would have a different pay rate, whether it was Manona, Clayton County, Iowa State Patrol, they're all gonna have a different rate and a different overtime, double time, whatever.
Right, I'm not for sure what.
Did he on the call, is he available and just make sure that he is aware that he might have to pay double time or overtime, whatever, and that. And that he's willing to do it this way. We can make a contingent upon incoming and him paying.
Paying, yeah.
So that we know, if you're.
We have it in right, right.
Can you just show this to Darcy? Or just corrections and.
Okay. Oh, yeah, like the mayor, he showed me that.
I'll take it back, yeah, if you know.
I showed her that today, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to keep her on.
Yeah, yeah. You, uh, you wanna keep trying, go ahead. Let's, uh, we're gonna move on.
Have a seat while you're working on the phone.
Yep. Okay, so we are now to eleven, right, uh, street bid projects? Dave?
Dave emailed us, City of Oslo Street Department. They're gonna do a patch on Libran through the storm drainings.
There was pictures in the pass round.
Yeah.
Of Libran.
I talked to Corey and the other. And they, they both decided it's probably better to do a cement patch.
Ready to get it here, Dave?
What? I'm sure you peel them up every day.
I'll go down that street.
Could be flying over it, Doc.
I never do, I'm gonna do a cement patch, get away from the sinking one. And there's a couple soft spots right beside it, so. We're gonna do a thirty-five by twenty-seven mile patch.
And then when we lay it over, the blacktop will come up to those sides of it.
What about that Libran is that?
That's right by Mark's, it knows where it's at.
It's.
Pretty close to Shepherd.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to think.
Chip, uh, Shepherd Johnson's.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Back to.
And you, you're sure that the pipe underneath the cupboard or whatever is intact? Okay, so it's just settling, it's not anything broken?
It's, should've been taken care of, but it's not.
Sure.
I was gonna say, didn't we just do this? I mean, since like every year we do this.
Yeah, yeah, it hasn't been very long.
So this J and J has the same, um.
Yeah, same bid as Corey. So Corey came in and asked in the gym room. And I did talk with Jim and Jay, they're willing to give us second to pull from here on out. And he does have insurance and he's been working with towns, so. Nice to have two bids. And then on, uh, Libran Street, we're gonna grind that off two inches. Like from Jack Avery's house to Becky Fritz's house. Yeah, two inch grind down and then lay it over with blacktop. And then we're gonna go from down Oak Drive from, uh. Traders coming north. Not quite to the stop sign.
The stop sign's a lot bigger, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it'll stop before that because it's not broke up there.
These have to be like sort of package deals, like we can't do leave on street.
Yeah, that'll be one, yeah, it'll be.
It has to be both together?
Yeah, it'll be one contractor. It'll be that total number. And the guy from Kleisner's actually beat River City, so. I would recommend Corey and I would recommend Kleisner's.
But Kleisner's.
What's like Corey and J and J, what part are they doing? The concrete, they were the second bid for Corey, David.
That's that.
That's that patch that's in the council packet and that'll be yet this budget year, so we're looking at doing that soon.
That's a different location.
By life on my, yeah. No.
It's, it's the second bid.
Yeah, Larry, it's those pictures, that's, that is the patch that we're doing.
What do you mean a second bid?
So the concrete work is gonna be done yet this spring.
Yeah.
And bacon is a little bit of nine thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. The black, the paving, the black topping is in your new budget year and that'll be street work done after July first.
You gotta put down the concrete, let it cure, and then the next year.
In July.
In July.
We're gonna put black top.
Put down the black top, okay. The blacktop guy doesn't do the concrete work in one deal.
Kleisner's bid was a hundred and fifty-one square yards less than River City on that Libran Street project?
Yeah.
Is that, is there a reason for that?
The same numbers.
Okay. Cause the other one there was in a yard.
Get out with him with Kleisner that day and he told me exactly what I'm right here.
So Kleisner's numbers are correct, River City is over?
Yeah.
On the amount necessary?
Yes. Yeah, they were both at the same number.
Just so that, yeah, the lesser one is enough.
Okay, so Dave has made the recommendation, uh, for, uh, bacon, concrete and Kleisner Construction for this, uh, street project. Questions for Dave? If not, is there a motion to? Go ahead with the project.
I would make a motion for bacon, concrete on the patch or the replacement, but either. And Kleisner Construction on the asphalt.
Alright, is there a second?
No, second.
Further discussion?
A second.
Yeah, we got, we got, yeah. Alright, so if no further discussion, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no. Alright, thank you, Dave.
People gonna get out of town.
They're not, they're not even gonna wanna come into town. Time to get done with these streets and then.
They're gonna be pinned in.
Yeah. It's gonna be a rough summer.
I get out, you might have to work from home.
My darn.
Alright, let's move on to item twelve, uh, tablets, uh, for the city council and, uh, Darcy, you got a lot of information on that.
I did, so we kinda talked about, um, the idea of going to tablets for council members so that we can get away from all the paper expense and just, um, scan documents to an email. We would establish an email for each of you. So, working with US Cellular, just wanted to give you their cost. Um, right now, they have a deal on the Galaxy tablets for a penny. Um, they also have four hundred dollars off iPad tablets, but I think probably the Galaxy is sufficient. And then they gave a breakout of gigabytes that I would say they said for six tablets, you could probably share six gigabytes. And that would be, uh, fifteen dollars a month per tablet, so be, you'd be looking at ninety dollars a month for your tablets. Yeah, you probably would wanna do unlimited, so you would go to the thirty-nine.
Is there, is there a reason why we only got prices from US Cellular and not already have company?
Well, I mean, we use US Cellular for our, um, cell phones and our tablets now, so I guess we're familiar with them. I don't know if you.
I know, like, I mean, I was crunching over the numbers and whatever it is. I know that about AT and TNT Mobile, they never used to have coverage in this area, but they are, they're national and they, it's like no competition. If we could reach out to their public sector and get an estimate, it would, it would shave off like between fifteen hundred and two thousand.
Okay.
The, like the unlimited data plans.
Okay.
For all of us, um, and maybe even more, you could probably, maybe even get eight tablets. And I can. Not to say no to US Cellular, but it would be good to.
Check with Verizon too and see what they have to offer, but I guess before I do all that, is this something you're interested in or are you wasting my time? That's I guess something he'd answer first.
I'm, I, I like both, but I prefer to have something a little more, store everything and not have all the paper shuffled. Save a tree.
Okay, so what's the consensus?
So we would get our minutes and everything on the tablet.
Yeah, we would scan that, all the doc, your packet and it would be sent to you like your email.
As long as you get a decent sized screen. And then would we leave them here?
No, you would, you would take them home because you would wanna look at your packet at home. So.
So we got a couple.
Becky?
Becky is, but anyway, you're thinking there?
No, I think it's fine either way. Like she said, it's fine, but there's a lot of paper here. You save a lot of money on copying machines.
Alright.
Yeah, paper and the.
Yeah, if you, you can get some more prices.
Sure, yeah.
I need running paper, that's it.
So you would prefer to get a packet of paper regardless of a tablet?
Alright.
Okay, alright, so I will get some more pricing for you and we'll discuss it again.
We'll put it on next month, huh?
Yeah.
Should we? Okay. Alright, let's go on in item thirteen, are you?
Come back, yeah, he's on the phone.
Okay.
Okay, here you are, Gideon, they are ready to hear you.
Hello, dear council?
Hello.
Hello.
Chief of Police, uh, he's in the car, I apologize, I'm not there, I really wanted to be there, but for medical reasons I couldn't come. Uh, I heard the team that traction, you guys, you wanna bring more police, I'll be very happy. If anybody needs to be paid, I'm more than happy to pay. You, you need to make a deposit even if it's all they have. I'll be happy to come up to us and deposit at the city. If it's needed, I'll place an open check. Not their mouths anymore. Whatever you need to make the, the community happy, I would really appreciate your cooperation. Again, I apologize for not being, I really wanted to, but I'm grateful you came here, if I weren't, I'd be like, I have to go back to this home.
Dave, one second, yeah? You okay? Right, so the, the way I'm hearing it, uh, Gideon will take care of the, the expenses, but we need to find out who's available to do the work, right? And that's.
One second, Gideon.
And, and so we need to, right now, we've got, uh, the chief is checking in with, uh, with, uh, the, which, which, uh.
ISB. ISB, Iowa State Patrol.
I have the Highway Patrol, Iowa State Highway Patrol about who we can get to work, so, um, and he won't hear back until tomorrow, probably. Alright?
Yep.
Okay.
No problem, but we gotta, we gotta show them the amount, two thousand, five thousand dollars, whatever it is, I'll be more than happy to cover it.
Okay.
Whatever it is, if I need to purchase a powder, I'll open check, without a, a signed check with Adam, with the city, I'll be happy to do it. Whatever you need, you guys need, I'm more than happy to cover it.
Okay.
No, no issue, no problem.
Alright, well, that, that's good. At least we know, uh, that that, uh, extra will be taken care of and.
That's what I'm saying, what it's gonna, what the cost might be and that's what it costs.
And for the rate, I would say whatever we did for.
Red, red.
Red, red, which was, what was that, fifty or sixty? Remember?
Oh, yeah, no, and I think we charged, I think it was fifty an hour.
Fifty an hour.
But now you're.
Probably won't be more than fifty. More than.
Right.
No, that's time and a half.
So it's time and a half, so.
Seventy-five an hour.
Yeah.
But that's still really good to have that much on a highway like that.
Yeah.
It's for the safety of.
Oh, you gotta have them, yeah. And I, I guess, uh.
Maybe to bring your fifty mile dollar check and place it in the city, so.
No. No, we know where you live. So. Yeah, so, uh, I, I, our thing right now though is that, uh, yeah, is to get in contact, you know, with these folks and it's not, uh, they're not available right now, okay? So the chief of, the chief will get with them tomorrow. Okay. And, uh, I don't know, uh, we, we, we could discuss or we could put together some kind of a flag contingent on what he finds, is that, is that?
That sounds very correct, cause that's what beauty says, is once you guys approve it, you'll go to, report it, then they will give you guys the, the approval and then a process. Whatever police you need, and to hire all sorts of private security, I'm happy to do that as well, it's agreed. I mean, we'll talk to you guys, you know, you guys.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll, uh, no private security, we'll get her.
Excellent.
Alright, so do you, um.
Special services.
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
Yeah, I'm needed special services, bodyguard.
So I'll leave it up to you folks, how you wanna.
Yeah, we, we discussed that, that maybe we'll, uh, we'll.
Last resort.
Fire department, yes.
Ask for resort.
You need law enforcement on that state highway.
Yeah, the last option, we need to have the fire department.
We gotta have the trained people, we gotta have trained people, no fire department, it's gotta be professional trained law enforcement.
You need law enforcement on that state highway.
I think we do have a number.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got the, so based on, yeah.
Yep, we got that.
Contingents on law enforcement being available and being capable of getting.
Alright.
And he's gotta put down a deposit equal to whatever math figures it's gonna cost.
Right.
Might be more, but.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So we've got, hang, hang on, we, we, we've got, we've got, uh, a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
The motion was by, by.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, have, are you gonna get it?
I'm hoping.
Oh, like, well, we got time, so we'll just make sure it's right, alright?
As it required. Second was by Larry?
Yep. Everybody hear that?
Yes.
Any, any more discussion? Not all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no. Alright, good to go.
Thank you very much.
Alright, okay. Alright. Okay, where, are we on fourteen?
Yeah.
Alright, fourteen, uh, resolution. Oh, thirteen, okay. Resolution fourteen twenty-four dash twenty-four, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Oslo, Iowa, approving the city council policies and procedures menu. So that's the one we've been kicking around for a little while.
Darcy, did you ever speak to Dan about on page eighteen, check between under A, about how it works if we're all staggered with being voted in?
Which one?
The A, about not fixing, it was only just an immediate term of office. As far as that, that other thing that we tabled last month.
Tell me the page again.
Eighteen. Just gotta find out about how that works. We never all run at the same time. And then last month we tabled the, the thing about the wages.
Mm-hmm.
And so we were gonna find out how that would work, about not fixing, not registering that immediate term of office.
Oh, yes, I was gonna get, he did get back to me, um, so that your wage would start if you do the ordinance this year, January first, the wage would go into effect. We're changing council, the mayor wage, yes, January first.
Even if we're already on the council?
Correct.
But even if that's during their immediate term of office?
Correct, yeah, January first for all of you.
The actual year, not the term.
It would be January first of two thousand twenty-five if you pass an ordinance this year for all of you.
I had a question on page eleven regarding voting. Is an electronic vote via Zoom accounted vote?
I believe so. The city attorney reviewed this and he left the language in there, so.
Cause I, I know my board of health, you, you can vote, but it's, doesn't get. Cause our, I know my board of health, you, you can vote, but it's, doesn't get recorded as a vote, if you're board of health, if you're on Zoom, excuse me. And I think, I think that's how they do the zoning and board of adjustments too.
Okay.
You can be on.
Probably.
You can be on to comment, but you can't vote.
I, I'd like to see a, a chain in here.
This is just your manual, this isn't your ordinance, this isn't ordinance, this is just your, kinda your bible if you.
Yeah, I was gonna close that.
Yeah.
This has nothing to do with the, the next terms of office.
No. Nope.
You're not having three on.
Right.
At once. Are you two staggered? Or do you stay?
Yeah, it's the mayor and you two who are on ballot.
That, does it kinda set up that way for cost savings, do you think? Cause it's, I mean, it's expensive to, um, election.
Yeah, that it is.
As we know.
Yeah.
I just, I think maybe you wouldn't wanna change your whole council out, I mean, I mean.
No, I don't, no, I think even fewer than.
Yeah.
I mean, cause three was kind of a big deal.
Yeah, and then it'll be three again.
Any other questions? There a motion to approve the resolution? Mary? Second?
Okay.
Becky? Further discussion? Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Maureen?
Yeah.
Maureen?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Eagleheart?
Yes.
Alright, it's done, thank you.
See, this'll be the kind of thing, it'll be nice to have those tablets for, cause you can refer back to them, you know, I have to dig through a bunch of papers.
Yeah. Okay, let's, now we're on item fourteen, uh, resolution number fourteen twenty-one dash twenty-four, approving the city of Posture purchasing policy.
Last council meeting, you made a one change from the five hundred to a thousand, and that was the only change that you have, um, directed me to make. So if you're in agreement with that, then go ahead and pass this resolution.
One move.
Motion, okay.
That's it.
You got it, babe.
The board's got that second. Okay, whenever you're ready, Darcy.
Maureen?
Yeah.
Maureen?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Eagleheart?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, item fifteen is extended warranty on a generator of the waste, uh, way, uh, management, uh, water treatment plant.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah. Chris, you can address that if you want, uh, yeah.
Chris Hackman, so you're supposed to use water, um, just looking at that, uh, generator has been online now for five years or something. In that time, we've had, um, we have had one repair, and that was under warranty, which was the heater. Um, at the time, we bought it five years ago, actually, probably about seven years ago, it was a thousand dollar generator, and I hate to think what that cost is now. So I didn't, didn't really think of it, but it sounded like the cost, uh, was fairly minimal to extend the.
Yeah, so it's thirty-six months, uh, at, uh, two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
We got three months.
For the thirty-six months, yeah.
I mean, three years.
Yeah. Yeah. Three-year extended warranty, and, and I, I can just throw a little bit of something on it, cause I farm, you know, and, and machinery is spending. And, and anymore, you, you know, you're talking a hundred and fifty dollars an hour shop time, uh. Take long, you know, you got twenty-six hundred bucks gone in a hurry, and then throw some parts in there, so, uh. I mean, I would, I would recommend that, uh, we keep doing this one, because, uh, like Chris said, it's, it's a spendy unit.
Didn't they drop it too? I think we gotta have a warranty on that thing.
And is that thirty-six months, or fifteen hundred hours, or whatever comes first, or?
Yeah, so the, the hours on it really aren't too much of a concern, it's maybe only run. Or power outage once or twice.
Oh, that's, it's low hours already.
Yeah, we do exercises.
Yeah, she goes online.
Yeah.
So, is, uh, any more questions? Uh, is there a motion then to?
I would move to approve the warranty.
Second. Discussion? Not all is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Or say no, Harry, thank you, Chris. Alright, item sixteen, then, uh, poli- police vehicle and equipment biz, chief.
Okay, so this is gonna get confusing, so you're gonna have to keep up with me. So let's start off with the vehicles itself. Um, I got two, two quotes. They are for a twenty twenty-five, um. Police and utility, basically Explorer Interceptor. One quote is for forty-nine, one, one, three. The other one is for forty-four, four twenty. And so like, ooh, I believe it was last, when we talked about it, it was the twenty-fours. Well, I made the phone call the next day, and the twenty-fours were no longer available as of December of twenty twenty-three, so they jumped into the twenty-fives.
That was laid out for you.
That was laid out.
Oh, yes.
On your desk.
Oh, I saw, sorry, yeah.
It's a significant difference in the two of them that they're.
They're not, just one's a better quote, they're, they're the same. If you, if, if you look, um. Everything is pretty much same on both quotes.
The only difference I see with the engine.
Yeah. Yep.
The engine? And that's actually the cheaper vehicle, it's got more power.
Right. So the cheaper one has the better engine.
Our Ford and thirty-City.
Right.
Of course, the other one from.
Decora Ford.
Decora Ford?
Yeah, that forty-nine, one, one, three.
What about this thing that just cannot get, was this person?
Cannot get, it's the.
Reverse sensor.
Um, four key fobs. See, the last quote that they were, they gave for the twenty twenty-fours, if four key, key fobs were available. Now, apparently, they're not gonna offer four key fobs.
Also, that doesn't matter to you?
No, uh-uh. I don't know. I guess they didn't give me a reason why they can't provide four key fobs, but I know they're expensive.
What's the discussion here, man?
Uh, which?
You got the cheaper vehicle, and the better engine.
Right, so yeah, that's.
Sound down, but.
Except, uh, the.
Did you say that Carl, Carl Ford specializes in police vehicles?
Mm-hmm, this, yeah, this is out of Story City, so they, they specialize in. LE vehicles, emergency vehicles for like Dodge, um, Ford, and Chevy, yeah.
So the brand really doesn't matter to them?
No, they, they, whatever any department's looking for, that, I mean, they're gonna look for them.
Why would we pick a Ford?
Ford?
It's more space.
It's more space for the dog.
Okay, enough.
Yep.
Did they say wait?
So, talking with Story City, so say if, on either one you go on, I'm assuming they're the same. On what you choose, if I call in tomorrow and say, okay, hey, the, the council decided to go with this vehicle. They would call it in, and it, they would be built either, uh, April build or a May build. And then after it's built, then it gets shipped to whatever, um, dealership, and then it can get picked up.
So if we have a destination charge from Story City, it's more, more than the Ford?
Destination charge?
Yeah. The charge to.
No, that was already, if you go to the third page. It was at, that's forty-eight, two oh five, one five, one five nine five, was added up to forty-nine, eight hundred. So you go to the very last page, and that's where you see your deductions and your destination charge. Let's see, whereas I'll deduct it off.
So it's still forty-four.
Right, so what I highlighted, that's the final price.
I got. But the car also has the same exact distribution.
Was Carl Ford able to do the reverse sensor or the key fobs, or was that just Decora's?
Um.
That's what's not, not available on this model anymore.
Right.
That's what I just.
On the model itself, not so much.
Not so much.
What the dealer can get, okay. Okay. Probably don't have any dash space left for a cam, or a reverse camera anyway.
No.
Time you get all your onboard computers and stuff.
Those better cars from Story City, and it's cheapest of all.
Their prices from Story City.
Yeah.
Are the same.
It does wanna have a better, more.
Better vehicle.
Yeah. Want me to get this going?
Yep.
Yep.
Those are the accepted bits from Carl Ford and Story City on the twenty twenty-five Police Interceptor.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, okay, so, I remember I said you had to keep up with me.
Ooh. I'm ready.
So, last month, you wanted to know for the outfit, what, for the cost of an outfit of vehicle. Okay? The three vendors I did contact, I got one, two responses, and one of them was the one that paper copied. Being that it, these are twenty twenty-fives, they're hard to, right, at this point, they're hard to. Give any estimates, because they don't know, they're, they're saying the twenty-fours, um, some of them will fit in the twenty-fives and some won't, but they don't know for sure. The one vendor that did not give me a quote, but he gave a verbal quote, quote today when I called me, um, he said a full outfit would be around forty-five thousand dollars. Okay, it's high, it, it's, it's deep. Now, the one that I have that gave me paper copy, um, I see they got the date, the year wrong, but it is a twenty twenty-five, they got the year wrong for the outfit. Where, you guys all have the sheet? Okay, so if you go through here, this is everything that they're gonna be put in this Explorer. Um, other than the radio, we'll have to purchase on our own, and find a radio, get a radio put in it, and then the camera system. But the camera system is, can be included with this quote that we have from sector. Um, so what, what, you turn to the second page of this. This, this one here. So there. So, you must went back, back, and then, so, their quote, first one for just the outfit of the vehicle. Was forty-three, nine, nine eighty. Then they also, if you look down, they do have a forty-two, two twenty, which is a multi-deal discount. That is including the, um. Camera and the, the body cameras and the, um, mobile cameras. But then if you look down below, they do a five-year, they call it a five-year term, five-year lease or whatever, it's not really lease, but it is. So they're doing a multi-deal where it is outfit, and the full department body cameras, and the mobile cameras for the vehicle system. The first payment would be twenty-four, not, twenty-four thousand nine hundred. Then four-year, then it'd be a four-year term, where it's, they have here twenty-eight, eight fifty, but I talked to them today, they said that's on the high side. So it probably is gonna be less than twenty-eight, eight fifty for, say, the next four years, it's like a payment plan.
Yeah, if we pay for it all at once, it's twenty-four nine.
Right, and then after that, there'll be a payment plan for the next four years. And it, this sector, um, organization is out of Iowa, they're based out of Iowa, they're based out of, uh, um, Urbandale, so this is where it comes in handy. Free City's not too far from Urbandale, once you get the vehicle, just take it straight down to Urbandale, they put everything in, and then they will come up and replace the cameras in the existing vehicles that we have now. So, cause I wanna get every vehicle to have their exact cameras that we have, and they work with our body cameras. So everything works together. Um. Now, I'm, Matt, last month, I mentioned that we, or, um, Darcy, I didn't, I'm not working on it, but. Darcy is, uh, right?
Trying.
Trying a vehicle fit grant from the USDA, is it a vehicle's grant, right?
Well, it's for the vehicle.
Vehicle and equipment. That one was, so if we get it, get accepted or get that, that's what we said, what it was, a fifty-five percent or fifty percent? Cost.
I don't remember, I had, I just started looking.
Yeah, it's either fifty or fifty-five percent that they would cover. So. Right.
So this is forty-three thousand plus the twenty-four thousand.
Yes, you mean the cost of the vehicle?
Yes, no, I'm talking about this page.
Oh, the outfit?
Right.
They can, no, they combined it, so the twenty-four nine is the.
Or we make payments.
Make payments.
What's the total? We'll call it, and we'll go down, probably more than.
You get a discount if you don't make payments?
No, you get the discount if you make the payments, that's why, that's why it's broke down there.
Yeah, please, yeah, yeah.
Some benefits with the, the lease agreement, okay, so when it comes to like year two or three, they come up, replace everything, you get brand new stuff, no additional cost. Right. Another thing with sector is that they have a mobile technician, we won't, if something goes wrong, we don't have to be down a vehicle, they will come up, we call them with the issue. They tier out the, you know, the priorities of everything, so they can say, okay, you don't have lights or sirens, well, you're number one, we gotta get you, we gotta come up and do it. They will take their van, they come up here to Postville, we don't have to drive down to Urbandale or anything, we'll still have a car if we absolutely need to go somewhere. If we were down one with the equipment problems, and with technology such as the laptop, the remote end.
Remote.
Access, we don't have to take it down to a place for any sort of technology purpose, you know, for technology problems.
So is there a cost to that, or part of the lease agreement?
That's all part of the lease agreement.
But if you pay it upfront?
I mean, it's.
It's probably there, but they might charge you.
Yeah, the equipment.
It's gonna cost a lot of money to do it on time.
But like with Axon, the nice part about the sector part is that with our evidence that we download and stuff, our body cameras, dash cameras, it's all synced up. So if we're outside of the car, I can hit my body cam quick, my dash cam kicks on, let's say we're talking to somebody, he runs, you know, when I hit my body camera. Well, then my dash cam kicks, kicks on, or, um, the videos will save under the same files, all of our documents, our documentation purposes would be a lot easier. Other thing they have is a constant recording, um, it's on those too, but the thing is, is, let's say we.
It's on those too, but the thing is, is let's say we get to the year five of this lease agreement and say we don't want to. Uh, go with GTAC or sector anymore, we still have access to our stuff. Axon, on the other hand, too bad, so sad, you're gonna pay for it, you're gonna, you're talking. Six figures, just to get your stuff that you've already dealt with.
That's what you're talking with the service and the technician, that's the select priority at the bottom, right? That's the five year program, not the four year.
The five, yeah, she said five years. Yeah, so there's some, there's quite a bit of benefit with the sector, I know Hudson goes with them.
Hudson, West Union, they had, they had kind of shares permit. Independence. Strawberry Point. Can't think of that one right now, mate, I, right now I can't think of it, but they're, so they, they're. Starting to make a name for themselves and they're getting up in the northeast corner, northeast Iowa corner. Uh, oh, Ankeny, if you wanna look at around Des Moines area, Ankeny. There was a county sheriff south of there, but they're starting to work their way up northeast and all the other department, local departments around here. Have nothing but good things to say about them. Cause. Like, uh, I did get, uh, Axon is another vendor, like what we had now for body cameras. I did get a quote for them from this body camera, this, now this is just for the body camera and, and the mobiles for. Four vehicles. Yeah, four vehicles. That was over, I think that was around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So if you're talking about the multi-deal stamp, that includes all the cameras and the.
Upfit, full department. Body cams and mobile cameras.
Cause that comes to like. A hundred and thirty thousand. Or to the forty-three, nine eighty, but then we got to pay extra for all that other stuff.
Right, so like, I don't remember, oh wait, here, I got it right here. Oh, this, no, this one, I think we added, what did we add it up as, ninety, they were less, remember? You're in like. This was the down payment of the twenty-four.
Right, but you're talking.
That you're either body cam, your vehicle, whatever is, is taking in, in a, in an instance, is that being saved like? Cloud, I mean.
We're, we're at the point where we, we need to really make upgrades around here, that's just my opinion, I'm not trying to speak out for Matt, but there's, there's. We're pretty far behind in a lot of the technology part, but.
Well, I mean, if, if this is being upgraded to that level, then you gotta be able to store that information somewhere too and be able to retrieve it in a timely fashion and.
And, and like the Axon, according to the rep that we spoke with, like I said, if we get to that last five years and we say, well, we're not gonna go with you again. You can't get to it at all.
No matter how good or bad your system.
Pay to get your. But these guys, it's your, I mean, it's yours, it's yours, you own, it's, if you needed something, say, say there was an incident. In the first year, and after the five years, you're like over at Delta Sector, you get, you, you get it all, now Axon. Is that in order to get that and you drop them, you would have to pay to get your evidence.
Yeah, it could be something simple as somebody accused us of saying something, well, now we gotta go back five years and we can't get to it.
Right.
You can go back historically then.
Yeah. And with the download portion of sector, all we did, I think we just had to increase our bog rate for the internet. And then we can download it when our car's parked. Downloads right through the internet and we don't have to disconnect a whole bunch of stuff. Sector also has the option of charging inside of your car, your body camera. It's just a little magnet and if you gotta, gotta get out of the car quick and get out and it snaps off.
They lose charge quick when it's pulled out like everything else does.
Yeah, I mean, and these are, I mean, these.
Yeah, they, they, they last a shift.
Yeah, they'll, they'll last a shift, but I mean, if you're, but if I'm doing an email on somebody, you know, I'm talking from the stop all the way through to. Two hours, three hours, yes, a lot of memory just on this alone. Where even if I'm just in here, and the thing is, it's like a plug-in. Here, well, I, it's, this camera's stuck here until it's done writing, cause if I unhook it, I can't. Now I, I just remove the file, so this, you know, this, it won't do it until, like with sector, it's not. Let's say end of your shift, you take it off, you put it in the bank and it just downloads the body camera portion and then if I needed to. So. There's benefits, sector, but right now Axon obviously dominates the market. They're cross support, they're making.
Except for holding your information hostage.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, we're the boss, we can do that, so. Yeah, there's, that's just my two cents.
Got a recommendation? Who was what?
The one he's presenting. That's just me, I don't know.
This is what it's all pertaining to. For the in-car. Um, and then your body cam, you know, have the. Was it three sixty? Around? And the in-car, I don't remember what she stated.
There's, yeah, there's something where it's, it's a lot wider vision.
Vision, it's always.
It's like fish eye, safety, like fish eye view.
It's more safety and. For the officer, eh, cause as soon as you say step out of the vehicle, your body cam automatically kicks in and then it's got cameras from the. On you and inside the car is watching the whole time for.
Squad itself.
Right. Yep. And then the computer. Is included in that, um. Quote too, and that is what, it's kinda similar to what we have right now, we're running, um. Panasonic tough books they're called and they are similar to these GTACs, basically it's a tough book, GTAC rugged.
That's the inboard.
That's, yep, that's inboard computer for the vehicle.
They have any other hardware that comes into the office? Just for the download abilities or?
Just, um, through the wifi and the body cam stuff, it'll automatic.
So it's just wifi then?
Yep. Oh, no. Like our part-time officer, he works for, part-time for Hudson. And like we, JT and I said, that they're, they're on sector and this type of. Service and it's so simple to run. Now, uh, Jess is old school, so computers don't come by natural with him, he said it's a lot simpler to run it. This sector and the computers that they have there and they have no issues.
Hey Bob, you got something?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna add.
That's included in this.
Really?
LPE's license plate, or LPR's license plate readers, so. There's only one other. Walk-on has them, I think, oh.
Walk-on has them right now in the local area.
Yep.
Only thing with that, it's not, you know. That's just like you could enter in, like, let's say you get a stolen car reported, I could open your computer. Type in the license plate of whatever stolen car is that's reported, I could just drive around. And let's say if I'm not looking for it or it's so far away that you're not worried about it, and you drive by. It goes alert, 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 there's a stolen car.
It'll pick it up.
You turn around and.
Is that ideal?
Yeah, and there's other things it could do too, um, wanted individuals to, associated with that vehicle. There's just a list goes on and on.
They have like a seminar or class to teach everybody.
Yep, yep, they would come up. Probably like say if they, they, if you went with them, they would come up after the, the vehicle got built. Come up and, well, actually, they'd come up sooner than that because, um, the other ones get replaced and they would come up to show. What needs to be done with the camera system and how to run it.
Have a chance. Okay, boy, he ran a lot of stuff by you. So, uh, we can throw this all in one motion?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So we can, uh, throw a motion together about the vehicle and the uplift.
Vehicle's done, and this is for the.
The equipment that we.
Do you wanna like say whether we're doing the lease, because just so you know, we have to list in lease on our debt, as debt for us and we have listed on our financial reports.
And also which one, cause this is the full year, this is a five year, the four.
It's the.
Twenty-four nine per year and twenty-eight plus for four years.
Yep.
That's what we're doing, that doesn't have to. It's the five year.
It does, they, it does have it, they just. This is a higher upgrade one, this one still has it, um. So.
I'm talking about the multi-deals stamp, that.
Right, right.
Not the bottom.
So. Unlimited remote tech services, this is where that's firmware updating, update testing, approval before pushing. Every year they'll, they'll come up and they'll do the testing remote, that's where that is remote. Um, and onsite stuff, now, the onsite one. They did explain that it can be the twenty-six, nine. You're gonna pay a little more, but they have not. I mean, it's entirely up to us if they want it, but they, for that, they have really. Not used, utilized that much onsite. Right, right. So what Becky was talking about, that twenty, that first twenty-four nine and that would be the full update and everything.
Sixteen, eight eighty a year for five years.
With the five years.
What was it?
So down payment of twenty-four thousand dollars and sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for five years.
Saying what?
Eight eighty a year for five years.
The bottom one was for five years.
I thought it was twenty-eight, eight fifty, he said that was more.
Yeah.
No, you're looking at, you're looking at just the camera, that sixteen eighty. Yeah, that's the cam, that's just the, that's not including the update.
But I think, so you guys are looking at.
You're looking at just the camera. Everybody else is looking at this one.
And me and I are looking at the camera.
No, the twenty-four nine, multi-deal stamp.
Multi-deal, okay.
See right there at the.
And you said it wasn't twenty-eight, eight, five, fifty, you said it was less.
Yeah, but you were high on that number.
So it's twenty-four thousand nine hundred.
Right.
And then twenty-eight thousand eight fifty a year.
But they're high on that number.
Or how many years?
Uh, be four year.
Four years.
Yep.
So it comes about a hundred and thirty-six nine.
With the full upfit of the vehicle and the body cam and the mobile cam.
The ball away.
Yes.
That is much as the car.
Well, yeah, the car is, yeah, car's already done.
I know, but what I'm saying.
We don't know if we can insure it now.
And like, like I said. Earlier, I did get a here from a vendor that didn't have anything written up, he just said over the phone. That just the upfit, not, and that's not including the camera or the. Body cam and the camera and the peer, just for that, it was around there, would be about forty-five thousand. So it, they're, they're close, yeah. That was just for them.
You better call Tara and up the insurance on the car.
We're gonna have to buy hair color for her.
If you give you that, save some for me.
That'll be a perk anymore. Take care of your hair.
I hope they're really high on that four-year deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, so about a hundred and. Is that camera making?
Okay.
To do the multi-deal stamp, twenty-four nine to start with on time, like four years. Twenty, whatever it is, twenty-eight, six four.
Yeah, okay, all right, is there a second to that?
Second, go ahead.
Further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
We better turn the dial on the cameras down to five.
All right, you got that done? We'll go on to then item seventeen, uh, Legion gun safe request, and that was, uh, I made that one, uh. So right now, the Legion gun safe is over in the hall, at Turner Hall, and it's in the basement and, uh. All of these guys are really getting old and to carry. And older, and you know, but, so, uh, you know, to carry these guns out of that basement. And, uh, you know, and most of the time they'll be carrying ten, twelve, sixteen guns, so, um. Right around the corner here in, in, uh, City Hall, there's, uh, room for the gun safe. Right on, you know, there's no steps, no steps, so I guess I, I would, uh. I told the, told the Legion, I would make the request on their behalf and then, and run it by you guys, so.
They're okay with that?
Yeah.
And they're, and if they have access to get in when they need them?
Yes, to do that side door. Have to give them a key, you know, because we don't.
How much does that safe weigh? How much does the safe itself weigh?
Well, it's not that big a gun, or a big safe, uh, I suppose it's, uh. Sixteen guns probably, it's, that's not that big.
Usually gun skaters are being.
You wanna appliance mover, that's how you move mine, I have one.
Okay, all right, sure, that'd be great, but, well, they haven't said like we can move it yet.
If they're okay with having them over here, I would make a motion to move the gun safe from the Legion, or from Turner Hall over to City Hall.
Thank you, is there a second? All right, all of them say say aye? Or say no, thank you very much, you guys. Okay, eighteen, then set public hearing to amend the budget.
So last, um, budget amendment of the current fiscal year, um. Just some minor changes, um, increasing. just some minor changes, um, increasing our revenue and expenditures for our garbage service, um, increasing our revenue for our police, um, decreased our revenue, or I should say our expenditures for capital project um, due to the three-year contract we signed with Iowa DOT, I made a change on that. So overall change, um, revenue in expenditures out, you're looking at, um, six hundred and thirty-six thousand. So I'm just, I'm asking you to set your public hearing tonight for your next council meeting, which would be April eighth. Need a motion to.
April, okay.
For what, matter of fact, is the, the budget is gonna be six hundred some thousand higher.
Right, so, uh, camera activity coming in, um, movement of money, um, we had some revenue of garbage service, we raised rates, but we had more expenditures out. Some more grants, you know, grants that we got in that we didn't anticipate, so.
You're gonna somewhat cover your increasing costs.
Yep.
Just to set the public.
Correct, for your next council meeting.
Which is April eighth. Then make a motion?
I'll move. Public grant for April eighth.
Thank you, second? All those in favors, oops, got something. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
All right.
Those say no, all right.
Is that at six, Dorsey?
Yeah, so remember that your max tax levy hearing is at six o'clock at your next meeting, there will be no other business on that agenda other than you will be in here to address any questions with your max tax levy. You will adjourn that meeting and then at seven o'clock, you will have your regular scheduled council meeting.
I'm gonna be out of town.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on to item nineteen, then resolution number fourteen twenty-three dash twenty-four, a resolution setting the annual salaries and wages for non-union employees of the city of Postville. So if you remember, we've got our union folks done and our, uh, city workers, uh, done and now we'll, I mean, for the union item, now we're talking about that and the, uh, two ladies that work in here, right?
Resource happy with a negotiation.
They went and voted after we left.
I don't know, that. Did you, yeah, they did.
Did they what?
They voted.
Okay.
Right. So, we have to talk about these other three folks. I think it's just three?
You're kind of locked into it by history. Right?
And are these numbers representing those percentages?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
So, what do you think, folks? See the figures and that's according to what we had given the other guys, so, yeah. Is there a second?
More?
Yep.
Mar? Rudy?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Emma Hart?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, twenty, on to the consent agenda, we got Chris here, talk about what happened at the least water treatment, so come on up, Chris.
I know.
Pictures of the plant itself and different pictures of the samples we took.
So we're supposed to just look at it like that?
Yeah, you could, I guess I should have had them out there earlier.
I'm just catching this one.
Um, so on Monday, we believe, on Monday through Tuesday, um, we had a bypass from Anagra Stars industrial um, treatment, instead of going to the industrial treatment plant, it came to the city's, uh, sewer plant. Brought it on Tuesday. We noticed it, um, at which time we called the IDNR and we diverted to our utilization basin, which luckily, since it's been so dry, was empty. So that basin is now half full. It's, we diverted the entire town, it was mixed with the other part of town, so we have seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons in those, uh, basins now and, um, and you'll have my report to the IDNR. That goes through, uh, kind of everything that happened. Since then, I've worked to try to start getting that flow back and it is fairly high strength, so it's going to take quite a while for us to get back to normal. Yeah, meantime, we're keeping track of our hours, we're keeping track of our costs, there's gonna be a lot of extra associated costs, but more. That test results back, we had on, um, the effluents we were sampling that day, so we should have a good, a real good idea of what exactly came to the plant and what was out, we also took samples at the Anagra Star site. Pretty good, we should have a pretty good graph of what we done.
The ones that don't say they're agro are the city ones?
These are all mostly at the city plant, right.
Unless it says agro, then it's.
Yeah, and so the, the issue is, um, this is classified, the DNR is an upset record. Um, it's an art plant, our plant is designed to take always water plants were sort of designed for the, the flow and ours is designed for the flow of the city, which is consistently, you know, the, uh, domestic sewer of twenty-two hundred people, when we get a shock like this, since it's a biological plant, it takes, the bugs aren't, they're not up to speed to handle that. And then it, it kind of throws the whole system out and I expect this to be, it'll take us probably close to a month to pull it all back through the system, which is sitting in storage right now, and after that, it'll take weeks to get.
So you have to store all the stuff that's not good until you can get it.
Right. So this will be an ongoing, um, job for probably a couple of months. But the good news, I guess, is that we did contain it. Um, we don't know, we don't know, um, how it affected the plant, the results of the plant going out, we, uh, I'm hopeful that our plant was able to sort of what they get in and what is going out in the effluents is.
So does the city charge Anagra Star for?
We are keeping track of all of our.
So that they will pay for what we?
Everything would have gone through their meter, so, um, everything will be accounted for in the meter, we can't, we're not able to bill exactly. It's a meter that's, uh, read monthly, so it'll, it'll just all accounted for in the monthly bill, but I can't say what went through those days, I, the two hundred and fifty thousand, I think is the minimum, looking at the inflow. Being the flows that were going through their meters and everywhere. Fifty-four gallons per liter.
The actual product?
It was a deep kill. And their basement was flooded and there was a, um, a, a pump, designed pump, so the domestic sewer comes to the city and the pump was designed to take their, their showers, their toilets to the city. That became submerged, it got over a wall that was separating that and once it did that, it pumped into the city correction system.
It's no, um, the boil water or anything like that?
No, no, no.
Drinking water.
No.
It's just all the sewer stuff.
Right, it's all sewer and the, the main, at, at this point, we'll get the test results back, but the main concern is our plant itself, like I said, it's a biological system, it's kind of a little plant, you hit it with this big of a, a shock, it could take a long time, but it could get.
Then it shot, Chris, the shock comes from disinfectants and cleaners that are in there?
Well, no, it's just the strength of blood especially, it's very high and BOD is bio, biological oxygen. It's the ability to, uh, it sucks the air, uh, oxygen out of the, out of the water, huh?
But the.
Yeah, it's just a, it's an organic, it's fluid that our bodies then break down. The, um, typically, our plant has a BOD of about a hundred and fifty grams per liter of BOD that come in a day, that's what, average grab sample would be. Um, this, I suspect, is probably lower than a thousand. So it's probably ten times the strength and our plant has a flow of about two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, so for two days, it was the equivalent of the flow of the entire town. And probably ten times the strength.
To some extent, uh, having that at the plant allowed, and I'm not saying it was good, it, it kept it from being a spill over in the creeks.
Yes.
And the city's, uh, big capturing containment system out there also helped protect the creeks.
Yeah, and in the discussion with the DNR, they brought that up as well, is, um, the fact that we built that two and a half million gallon, two million gallon equalization basin gave us the place to go. Many towns wouldn't have had that and there was nothing they could have done, they would have had to watch it go through, partially treated. We did have that equalization basin and we were lucky enough that it's been, I know nobody likes that it's this dry, but it did save us here because of the equalization basin.
What's the total volume, like, two million?
Two million.
That's what you suspect was likely an intentional act, that's what started the whole thing, or just that one blockage?
Um.
The cigarette butt dispenser.
Yeah, that's, um, that's what caused the, uh, that's what caused the flood and I, I believe they were working on it for several days.
The what?
They, it ultimately ended up being a, a container, cigarette butt container that was plugged in there. And it took them, it took them, um, I think they were working at that mall for days and finally Nessa was able, pumping was able to get. Cause that was the line that typically would have flowed to their industrial plant, that became plugged. So it backed up their basement inside the plant, went over a wall into where the pump that pumps to the city is, and that pump just got pumped into the city.
Their industrial waste plant, uh, handles this bloody stuff, all that goes on under there, right?
So a totally different plant.
Totally different.
Yeah, it's, uh, they have a huge anaerobic digester right in front of it, which, um, is designed for this kind of industrial waste, they'll get this kind of shock, a flow will come in and it's big enough so that they can, they might have days where they push eight hundred thousand gallons there, but it's big enough that they can take the flow and it also breaks it down so that consistently, that plant that they have is taking the good system. I don't know the numbers, but that consistent volume every day, that way it's minimal. They don't have shock and we don't, we're not like, I say, oversized for domestic sewer.
How long it had been, how long it had been, had it been?
I'm sure, I'm certain of two days. I'm certain of two days, we can see that on our charts. If it was, uh, if it was plugged over the weekend, I couldn't see it, I suspect maybe it was.
Because I saw that, yes.
Yeah, there would have been lesser flows, we saw some evidence of it, but I can't.
Do they not have to do daily monitoring on their end?
No, we're not a, uh, they do on their industrial plant every day. Um, they're not large enough, but we're not a large enough town to be considered, brought inside, so any, um, they can initiate, like Norplex has a, um, a treatment agreement with us, but they weren't required to do that, Norplex actually, they wanted to do it as part of their. Um, we can't, we can't force a treatment agreement upon them on this, they're not in a flow, that would have to come through the DNR.
DNR is not going to smile upon them? Like?
No.
I mean, this is a pretty substantial, especially if it made it to Williams Creek.
DNR was in town, they came the next day. So now, no, it's obviously something they're not promising.
And how much did actually get out to like Williams Creek or any other receiving streams?
We don't know what, uh, we took a composite sample, which is, we have a machine that holds a sample once an hour, twenty-four hours, and we had that running from nine o'clock on Monday to nine o'clock. Just visually looking at it, to look at. Um, visually looking at the, yeah, actually looked at that day until later in the day. The composite sample on the influence, it's dark. So it's possible that the, uh, plant absorbed that first shock or held it, the plant itself with seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons, so that first days would have been fairly low. Oh, no, I can. We're regulated on, this, uh, soluble solid, I'm thinking, we can get there, ammonia you can't see. Um, it's a concern and BOD, you can't see. Um, we should know that for a listen.
But there was no downstream fish kill or any?
We walked.
They walk.
We walked.
You don't think we're gonna get a fine from the DNR?
I don't think we will.
No. Cigarette butt dispenser, what's a cigarette butt dispenser?
That's one of the standbouts that's called, it's got a big base on.
Oh my, that was in there? Oh my god. Couldn't have gotten there by itself.
With all that product that come through, with the, with the insolubles that are gonna settle out into your tanks, you're gonna have to drain down and clean out?
I have multiple longer concerns, I have concerns about this kind of loading, what it's gonna do to our sludge. So we're sized to, for the sludge in this town, I don't think it'll be a problem, but it is a concern, you may have extra sludge to plan to fly this fall. Concerned about in the bottom of that EQ basin, when we get it out, we may have a bunch of slime down there. See that when we get it drained out. Concerned about it changing just the character of the bugs, and they tend, that tends to get a certain strain of bacteria that works best for your plant, you know, or they strength, well, it's completely different, so, yeah, there's multiple.
Sound to that agreement? This is violation of that contract.
All right, any more questions for Chris? I think, um, uh, what I've noticed the last couple of days with, uh, we're working for Chris and then I did, we did talk to the DNR when they were up there and they, they also said that, uh, truly here's a guy that knows what he's doing.
I see that.
And, uh, he caught it, you know, when he could, as soon as he could and handled it just about as good as you can and the DNR said so also, so thank you, Chris, for doing, doing a great job.
Exactly.
Charles C. had the top ten toxic waste in this.
Right. So.
They made a big, big water medication that's arsenic. And I, used to be. It used to be, yeah, it used to be the.
Because I told them we were gonna put money to I-Pate. So, yeah.
Is there any? So, uh, any other questions then on, on the consent agenda?
Okay, so Devora was asking me about the, um, proposal from Fidelity Bank to open, uh, money market account. Um, so I had informed them that we were looking at pulling funds into I-Pate, so they asked to meet the mayor and I. Um, so we met with them and this is, the offer they came back was, they were willing to have you open a money market account with a three point five percent locked interest for fourteen months. And after fourteen months, it would become a variable equal to two percent under the federal funds rate with a four of one percent. So I didn't want to open another account unless you agreed for me to do that, so it, that's why it's on your agenda for tonight.
Uh, what was I-Pate's rate?
Last I looked, it was at five point two one percent. I don't know what it is today, but that was when we approached the bank. Our current checking is at getting point six zero percent.
Which, which basis is that again?
This is Fidelity where we have our funds.
Checking and savings are.
Yeah, it's not good.
But that's going to lock money up for fourteen months? Where the I-Pate is fluid?
No, the three point five percent is locked in. That interest rate's locked in for fourteen months.
Rate is, not the money.
Yeah, not the money. The money, we get six transfers like any other money market savings.
For a month, right?
Right.
So the idea was to get something better than what we've been getting?
Yeah.
You know? Yeah, it did, did a little bit, yeah.
So you're in agreement to open the money market savings?
I think so.
Okay. Well, it's part of the consent agenda. So as long as you're in agreement with it, then I'll go ahead and do it.
Anything else in there? Oh, I'm going to talk a little bit about the housing committee. Yeah. Notice they got a couple of ladies that, we had, we did not have a housing committee before. And with some of our actions that we've been doing here about addressing some of these dilapidated houses, we just figured that we needed to put together some more eyes and ears in this project and this, and so these two ladies, Devora and Becky, have agreed to be on that committee. And we've already met with a couple of the homeowners to talk with them. So thank them for doing that, you know. Hopefully it's not going to take a lot of time out of your day.
Well, the truth, we trusted our.
Yeah. Yeah. Sure.
I was getting the two people mixed up. I know they were different. But the first guy that we met with, he has hired Mr. Casey.
Yeah.
And is plugging. And then the other guy that we met with, didn't he have to have something done by a certain time? Was that not?
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we, please send him a letter.
He did that. He had to call you. Yeah, oh, I know what it was.
All the housing inspector to get a progress report done. Yeah, let the inspector in to do a progress. Yeah.
Okay, yep. Well, that's, that's it.
So they should thank Dick Hilgerson for cleaning up the old shant house. Have you seen that?
Oh, she's coming along, yeah.
He cleaned that all up?
That was some pushing.
That was some more pushing.
Yeah, that was, that.
Mary, you can thank the mayor. Thank you. I'll even clap.
No, you don't.
I'm sure there's some broken holes there. I walked past.
By the funeral.
Shut off the heat and some pipes.
Shannon Brackway, that area. Or by Shannon Brackway.
Nope, nope, nope. But this one's that, what color is that? I say it's purple, but what, blue by the, by the funeral.
But it's got dumpsters there now?
Yep.
Yeah, there's a dumpster there between shoes. That left, left everything in the cupboard.
Why not?
It's not good. So if there's not anything else on the consent agenda, is there a motion to accept this?
I just, I had one more question as far as the Dave was here. Just curious, I know you had said something about one time that you guys go around and check like the alleys for damage and when they need rock or whatever. You done that already or? Just starting doing it now? The one I got approached about was the alley between like, say like Nick Zemans and
Now like bacon's on that?
So, yeah. From eighteen over. I think that's all gravel. That one, wasn't that one all gravel?
They're, they're all of them sealed.
Oh, okay. Because that was, I got yelled at too, is it? It was the only one that wasn't? Seen it in the dark and under snow and ice and rain.
Seal code alleys.
Okay.
Alley behind where Jerome left.
Between this one and the next one, he's not.
If I run into Jerome, I'll get.
I got yelled at for about an hour and a quick.
Quick papers.
Well, yeah, if you found out who it was, you'd understand. So I thought I'd yell at you.
What do we have now?
Oh, so I got a motion or whatever.
Okay, there a second? All right, all of those in favor, say aye. So you know, all right, we got that done. Let's go to twenty one, then resolution for money to pay the claims. Second?
Sure.
Whenever you're ready, Chris.
Moore?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Inno Hart?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item twenty two, probably comment one more time. All right. Okay, anybody else?
I got a question here. Is urban engineering report?
Yeah, that's just for your information for now. No, it's not.
That tax that we voted on.
You had a local option?
Yeah, local option. Does that, does that pass?
Yeah, it passed.
Okay.
Yeah, about ninety, ninety percent.
How many people voted that?
Sixty one.
Sixty one.
What?
In Postville.
Sixty nine.
Sixty one in Postville.
Two precincts in Postville, total vote sixty one. Yes was fifty five, no was six.
How many no's?
Six. I thought sixty one voters was a good turnout.
So I did hear back from ISP. They got a big project going down in Dubuque that day, but we can free up one of them for up here for Sunday.
Okay.
So we're going to work on Clayton County. They're checking on getting some reserves come up, so.
Wonderful, all right.
Should be covered.
Great. Got a question there?
Thirty two total ballots. Was that in the county? Did any town not pass?
No, no, it, no, they all flew through.
Four cities had it and then the rural part of El Maki County had it. And it passed in all five situations.
So it's locked in? We'll never have to vote for that?
Not necessarily. Well, we are.
Unless you decide to change the.
Where it goes.
Where it goes, yeah.
And I think like, I want to say Waterville and maybe Lansing.
Lansing.
Have to do it again in ten years.
We took the sunset clause off of it. We took the sunset clause off it.
Okay. I think we got that. I got nothing to say more.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Somebody came to me and they said, you're in the city council. Putting all those trees on the highway, are they going to replant a tree in place of them or we just? Had to widen the highway or what?
That's part of the
DOT.
DOT right away. They're going to, aren't they?
I didn't realize they were going to cut trees down.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just saying what they did Castillon auction.
Yeah, were a good number of them.
Big sidewalk and.
Looks like quite a few that are.
Chris knows what they.
These are like maples.
Booze?
And Ruth Burns is everything. That they get a great tree behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's, that's going to take, take care. For live. So, all right.
One more thing. They did, they did an extremely good job of trimming the tree. And now I heard the ladies who live there told me they had heard that done. Doesn't make much sense. If that's true.
Okay, yeah, there, that's it, yeah. I don't know, but I.
The school is fencing in, this is in the compassion of the, school is fencing in the rest of their properties.
Correct.
Has it been vandalism?
No, they got a homeland security grant.
Where was that at, Larry?
The school, they're fencing in their whole property, although they have gates, you know, like at the top of the U or whatever, there's going to be.
They are, yeah, they're locking down the whole campus.
Great. If you could take that money seize and say to people, okay, somebody's doing vandalism here. There's a thousand dollars reward.
What mine's been seized? All the fifty eight thousand?
There a motion, do it, Chris?
Make the motion, do it, Chris. You can have it.
I'll say.
I got with both of you. All of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, so you know. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.